Okay, members, we're about to begin. Okay, this is the Energy Climate Change and Environmental Justice Committee, and today is Tuesday, November 17th. Colleagues, thank you very much for being here today. We have a full agenda today. Some of our key issues speak to environmental justice and climate change. We'll be taking 45 minutes of public comment before taking up any of our agenda items. I also just want to give you a quick preview of a few things. Today, we're going to be progressing with actions related to our Valley Generating Station in Sun Valley, which happens to be one of the most burdened communities in our city. We're also getting an update on from sanitation regarding the development of the Recycla Scorecard, and this effort is being led by Mr. Corretts. So hopefully, he can also help us address some of our organics issues that we also have. And lastly, we are also discussing several items related to oil wells and drilling within our city, items that people are anxious to hear about. I just want to make sure, want to make something clear and explain what our path moving forward is going to be when it comes to oil drilling. And today's meeting is to hear from the city attorney on our legal analysis that they provided to us. This is an opportunity for all of you to ask questions and be informed on this issue. And I also ask that you follow up. We'll be follow up on today's presentation closely because we need to make sure that some of the key decisions, we have to make key decisions in the very near future. So while we're going to take a limited action today, I know that there's going to be a lot more discussion in the future, so I want to make sure that everybody understands that. We will be scheduling this topic, including the Patrolman Administrator's Report, at our next committee meeting, which is scheduled for December 1st. That's when I do expect this committee to take action on policies that will best protect our communities of color and the most vulnerable residents. So, Mr. Clerk, at this time, why don't you go ahead and call the role?
Yes, Madam Chair. Councilmember Martinez?
Present.
Councilmember Corretts?
Present.
Councilmember Krikorian?
Here.
Councilmember Sadio?
Here.
Councilmember Ofero?
Present.
Five members present. The quorum of the committee is present, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and take 45 minutes of public comment. Mr. Clerk, why don't you go ahead and read the calling information for folks who would like to speak on any of the agenda items this afternoon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As indicated on the committee agenda, members of the public who wish to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID 1612927434 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Once again, members of the public who wish to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1612927434 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your time to speak, please indicate which specific agenda item you would like to speak on. Please turn down the volume of your devices on which you are listening to the meeting to avoid any feedback due to the time lag.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can you please explain our speaking roles to members of the public?
Certainly, Madam Chair. To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to two minutes total, and one minute for general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the chair. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again stray off topic, the chair will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. We will take 45 minutes total of public comment, as the chair specified. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the committee meeting. If you are also listening to the committee meeting on your computer, channel 35 or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There is a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast on those devices, and it will cause confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So we're going to go ahead and open the lines. We've, we're going to go ahead and take 45 minutes of public comment. Let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller ending in 2462, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in 2462, press star six to unmute yourself.
Could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. What items would you like, what items would you like to speak on?
Today, I'm speaking on item 13, the L.A. City Attorney's Presentation on All Administrators' Report. My name is Angela Gibson, and I represent Greater L.A. African-American Chamber of Commerce.
You have one minute.
We believe that, thank you, we believe that during a pandemic, now is not the time to severely restrict or shut down local oil and gas production and potentially lay off hundreds of employees. We're relying on our local infrastructure at this time to support our business and family needs, and we're concerned that you'll need to go to foreign sources that won't hire Los Angeles workers or pay California taxes. Our current economy will not be able to recover if we move forward with this process. Thank you.
Next caller.
Caller ending in 2803, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Caller ending in 0900, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on item 13. My name is Raymond Watson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
For the foreseeable future, we have a demand issue as Californians and Angelenos. We cannot produce enough oil in California to prohibit us from being victims of import, and it's going to happen. Import happens right now and will continue to happen to the extent we don't produce oil here. We must address the demand issue before we start making hasty decisions to stop production because the import of foreign oil only hurts our air quality, our health, our economy. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 0441, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, I'm speaking to item number 13 and to general public comment. My name is Rabia Sen, and I'm with Esperanza Community Housing. We're proud members of the Stand L.A. Coalition, working to end the negative health impact of urban oil drilling and to protect the public health of all Angelenos, especially those communities living on the front line, mostly low-income communities and communities of color. You have the power to do the right thing and to address this manifestation of environmental racism and its impact on thousands of Angelenos. That's why we're asking you for two things. The first is to move that the Planning Department and City Attorney draft an ordinance for a 2,500-foot human health and safety buffer and declare wells a non-conforming land use. And the second is to please publicly release the City Attorney's Report or summary of the key findings. At Esperanza, working alongside the communities of South Central, we have seen firsthand the devastating health impact of neighborhood oil drilling. It is no joke, and to hear people call in and say that it's the foreign oil that's going to pollute and impact our health is to basically ignore what our frontline...
Caller ending in 3436, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
I'm speaking on item 13. This is Alice Ruffel from California Interface Power and Light.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. So I'm requesting two things. One, that the committee should move the Planning Department and City Attorney draft an ordinance for a 2,500-foot health and safety buffer and declare wells a non-conforming land use. And also to release at least part of the Attorney's Report having to do with this. Many, many of us in the environmental justice communities have actually lost people and family members to cancer mainly related to oil, and we must go for a just transition. We are working to repurpose jobs for oil and gas workers in the clean energy sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 5331, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
P. Anthony Thomas. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Given the possible deficit that the city is facing, it may not be prudent for the city to move in a direction of prohibiting local production. Better to produce it here, members, with the environmental regulations that we, that the industry is under, rather than to depend on imports, which should ultimately impact us at the pump. We need to also look at, if you can, since you're looking at health and health effects, and at the health effect of an all-electrical world on families, especially those communities of color. Madam Chair and members, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 0985, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in 0985, press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Graham Hamilton, and I'll be speaking on item number 13.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Graham. I'm with the Surf Fighter Foundation, Los Angeles Chapter, and we're a proud member of Stand L.A. We know that some 500,000 Angelenos live within half a mile of an active oil and gas site. We know that these sites are constantly spewing toxic chemicals into the air, threatening the lives of lower-income families and communities of color, communities that have suffered the sick legacy of environmental racism for generations. With COVID-19 ravaging Black and Brown communities, we know that living under the shadow of oil and gas facilities has only served to intensify the effects of a disease that has killed nearly 20,000 Angelenos. The intersections of racial injustice, economic inequality, and the climate crisis have been sharply underscored by COVID-19, and this council can tackle these issues by advancing a just transition and recovery out of COVID and away from a fossil fuel economy that is devastating our communities and the planet. To that end, we urge you to take the first step by moving that the Planning Department and the City Attorney draft an ordinance to establish a 2,500-foot human health and safety setback, declare wells a non-conforming land use.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 9412, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Armando Flores, speaking on item 13.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Armando Flores with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. While we commend the time and effort put into conducting and completing the oil and gas report, we reject any recommendation which would increase setbacks or any regulations which would restrict local oil and natural gas production. Implementing increased setbacks would negatively impact our local economy, jeopardize good-paying jobs, impose unnecessary costs on residents and local businesses, and increase our dependence on unreliable foreign sources of oil. It is irresponsible to consider policies that would further reduce oil and gas operations and with it, tens of millions of critical tax revenue for local services. We encourage you to embrace an energy strategy that incorporates all forms of energy, traditional oil and natural gas, and renewables such as wind and solar. This approach, rather than create the burden for local communities, is how we're going to ensure reliable energy supply for our businesses and all Angelenos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 1403, press star six to unmute yourself.
You have, you have, you have, you have.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Can you please, Speaker, can you please turn off your other device because we're getting a lot of feedback from the other side? If you're listening to this meeting, you need to turn down your other device. Speaker? Can I just move on to the next speaker?
Caller ending in 4024, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
It's me, mommy. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. What items do you want to speak on?
All items, including item 13.
You have two minutes.
And general public comment.
Two minutes for all items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Is that a total of three fucking minutes only?
Mr. Herman, please start, or I'm going to go on to the next speaker.
The, the, the administration report regarding God hates homosexuals about oil and gas. Do not pay taxes if they can increase your oil and gas during the COVID-19 crisis report. Then the foreseeable cannot produce or import a demand of such oil and gas like your ass. Only hurts the economy, fat mommies. Now let me go to item 13, fat mommies. Regarding the negative house racism is no fucking joke. Fuck the effect of our health affects our communities, just like it did with those batteries in Boyle Heights, X-ide. And now you're cleaning it up with that jackass, what's his name? Kevin DeLeone, no place like home asshole. Place a buffer on the attorney for all liabilities, causing such a racism of suffering towards minorities like me, a black motherfucker. Now to my general public comment, you fat cunts with fat, flabby arms. Where's the maid? Has she left with her father-in-law? What are you going to do about her, mommy? You gonna let that fat cake, no cake, baked cake in your facilities now that her grandpa left? We got rid of you, Wesen, you piece of shit, smelly breath, short little finger, fucking white motherfucking black ass Jew. You're gone. The same with you. Next. Anyone fucking with the community is going to be gone. We're going to go door to door and push you niggas out of L.A. and replace you with white niggas that are good for the economy, good for the demand, and good for the interest of all people. FBI, fuck L.A., fuck Jose Weza, fuck Englander, and fuck whoever fucks with the Rico Act. None of you are good criminals, hostility, and you create a hostile environment due to COVID-19. And first...
Next speaker.
Caller ending in 6605, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in 6605, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in 7839, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in 7839, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in 6973, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, this is Ben Ophley with the Western States Patrolman Association. I'd like to speak on item 13.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to provide some economic context to the conversation we'll be having today. Late last month, L.A. Times reported the financial crisis at City Hall deepened significantly, with budget analysts warning this city shortfall could reach $400 to $600 million by the end of the fiscal year. This grim budget shortfall is fueled by coronavirus shutdowns that have sent unemployment soaring, caused many small businesses to close, and now threaten major cuts in municipal services. Now, on the other hand, oil and gas production provides more than $226 million in local and state tax revenues to support essential services like education, police, and fire. In other words, the oil and gas industry provides significant funding for the very services that are currently facing severe cuts. This is not the time to pursue these regulations. Instead, the city should focus on economic recovery and protect the businesses that continue to play a vital role in the local economy. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in 4222, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Ron Miller, Executive Secretary of the L.A. Orange County Building Trades, item 13.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Look, the oil and gas industry in the state of California generates over $20 billion worth of income in the state. Many billions of that is in the L.A. area, almost $5 billion in wages to local workers. The city hired a good oil administrator. He put a report out. This attorney, whatever the report says on that, you know, the oil administrator said it's going to cost the city billions of dollars in lost revenue. We have rules in place for bad operators, for extractors that aren't playing by the rules, and we say put those guys out of business if they're not playing by the rules. You shouldn't harm the good partners of the city that are extracting the oil and doing the right thing under the environmental regulations that are in place. So I would suggest that you take that oil administrators' report, cozy up to it till after the holidays, and then let's circle back around and see what the real impact is because the city's facing a budget deficit up above...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 6295, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good afternoon. My name is Laurel Conce, and I'm speaking on item 13. I live in the University Park community of South Central Los Angeles. Residents from our community are asking your committee to do the following. First, we're requesting that the Planning Department and the City Attorney's Office to begin drafting an ordinance for a 2,500-foot buffer. The buffer would serve as a health and safety measure in our community. Second, we are asking that the oil extraction site in our neighborhood, you know, be phased out and that the site be cleaned up. We ask your committee to take the leadership to bring environmental justice to our community. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in 6987, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Jocelyn Mogal, Article 13.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Hi there, my name is Jocelyn Mogal from Communities for a Better Environment. I am the Youth Environmental Justice Intern, and I propose for a 2,500-foot health and safety buffer. The sole reason is because I live incredibly close to the WOMP oil drilling sites and as well as various other oil drilling sites throughout the city of Wilmington, California. And I'm kind of very disappointed in the fact that there isn't a health and safety buffer already implemented, let alone the fact that the city council hasn't even decided that, let alone local city council councilman Joe Biscayino hasn't even considered anything really to environmental justice. So pretty much what I am proposing is for a 2,500-foot health and safety buffer so that all Angelenos, including myself, can be able to breathe healthy air and do not be able to have toxins, whereas myself have numerous health problems due to the fact that I live near numerous oil wells. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 1326, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in 1326, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Anna Hernandez, and I would like to speak to item number 13 on the agenda.
You have one, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I am a member of the community in the University Park area in South Central L.A. in City One, and I would like the, I would like to remind the committee that our precedents have been negligent in taking care of the coronavirus, and I encourage you all to please think about the mortality rates that would be caused due to the oil drilling in our communities. And so I would like to make two points and request that, number one, that the Planning Department and City Attorney begin drafting an ordinance for the 2,500-foot human health and safety buffer. And number two, in order for a just transition to happen, we urge you, we urge your committee to take bold leadership, to bring environmental justice advocates, labor unions, and other stakeholders together to create a concrete justice.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller ending in 9743, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Tommy Fawley with IBEW Local 11, and I'm going to speak on number 13.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Tommy Fawley, and I'm a proud member of IBEW Local 11. Throughout the years, my sisters and brothers and I have fought for the strongest regulations and policies to protect our workforce and families. We also have been out there every day since the pandemic as the essential workers to help provide families with their energy needs during these uncertain times. If L.A. decides to shut down local production, we will have to import oil that is not produced to California's stringent safety, labor, and environmental standards. Oil produced by foreign sources is not subject to rigorous environmental review, greenhouse gas mitigation, and worker safety inspections present in California. Policies that restrict local energy production would take away our jobs and all that we have fought for and demanded of our industry to protect our workforce. I urge you to reject any recommendations.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller ending in 0603, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, my name is Wendy, and I'd like to speak on item 13.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I am a resident of Wilmington, where most of the oil drilling sites are, and I live about a half a mile away from the closest oil drilling site to me. I've lived in Wilmington almost all my life. I love my neighborhood, but I'm so deeply concerned for the health of my family and my own. My mom relies on her nebulizer literally every night just to breathe properly because she constantly has issues with her asthma. Breathing in toxic air from these oil drilling sites, while simultaneously being in a pandemic of a respiratory disease, is concerning, especially for our neighborhood. while simultaneously being in a pandemic of a respiratory disease is concerning, especially for our neighborhood. We waited over five years for the city council and this committee to respond to our concerns for a safety buffer that truly protects our health, and yet we're still waiting. How long do we have to keep waiting? We can no longer sacrifice our health and the health of our children, neighbors, friends to the oil and gas industry. I really hope today that Chairwoman Nuri Martinez shows her leadership and introduces a motion of a two thousand five hundred foot buffer. We need leadership from this committee and the whole city council to lead on it.
Next caller.
Caller ending in two, seven, eight, zero, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hart. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item thirteen.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you. I'm with the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance. We have sixty-two member neighborhood councils now, and we took a position in support of the twenty-five hundred foot buffer many years ago now. I'm not clear as to why so little progress for the buffer has been made. I'm guessing that is due to a lack of political will. So, please know that many of us are very anxious to see this buffer put in place and hope and expect that you will do the right thing as our health and the health of the planet depend on all of us moving away from fossil fuels. The oil industry doesn't want the buffers, but the people do. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in seven, seven, one, one, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Francisco Arago. Item number thirteen, please.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Francisco Arago, and I'm a proud member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Eleven. I've spent many years in our apprenticeship to gain the experience and skills necessary to safely build and maintain our local oil and gas production facility. My sisters and brothers have been working at those facilities during this pandemic as essential workers so that everyone else can safely remain in their homes. I hope that our elected leaders will show true leadership and put aside the emotion and make decisions based on facts. If the city decides to continue looking at restricting and legislating from a place of fear, you will be destroying blue collar families who depend on these jobs to support their families in the very neighborhoods you govern. You also will be decimating the city with the liability that is projected to potentially reach ninety-seven point six billion dollars if an increased setback was established. In addition to the current budget shortfall projected to possibly reach up to six hundred million this fiscal year, I urge you to work with us and not against us.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in four, two, six, two, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Rodney Cobos, and I want to speak on Agenda Item number thirteen.
Can you have one minute? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Rodney Cobos with the Southern California Pipe Trades. You know, instead of pursuing the setback recommendations, we should be focusing on rebuilding our economy from the devastation of the pandemic. It will take a long time and many people and it'll take many people longer to regain employment. But there is jobs in the energy sector. The jobs we are talking about are good-paying union jobs with much-needed health benefits for families and many members that work in the oil sector. There should be there will be real problems for thousands of families in L.A. if we do not defend them. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in two, five, three, one, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Gus Torres, and I'll be speaking on item thirteen.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Gus Torres, and on behalf of UA Local Two-Fifty Pipe Fitters, Welders, and Apprentices, and I am here to advocate for my fellow workers in the oil and gas industry that people don't always know about our industry. It is heavily regulated and monitored. The jobs are good and we are paid well. These jobs mean a lot to us, and we offer a lot to Los Angeles. I ask all of you to consider our jobs and our lives when you make your decision today. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in one, three, nine, four, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Carlin Wing. I'd like to speak on item thirteen.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Carlin Wing. I'm with former resident of the University Park community, South Central L.A. in CD One. I currently live in West Adams. Residents from our community are asking the committee to do two things. One is in support of the calling in support of the twenty-five hundred foot human health and safety buffer. We request that the planning department and city attorney begin drafting an ordinance for that. You know, that's, as other callers have mentioned, something that Stand L.A. and other organizations have been asking for for a long time. And the second is, and I've been, you know, listening to the comments about jobs, and I understand what a difficult issue this is. I think there are a tremendous number of jobs that can be created by phasing out oil extraction in our neighborhoods, cleaning up wells, rapidly building out clean renewable energy, a clean renewable energy economy. So, I would just ask you to consider that, to bring everyone together, to bring environmental justice advocates together with labor unions.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in zero, nine, three, four, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Albert Wardy, and I'd like to speak on item number thirteen.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name's Albert Wardy, and I represent ironworkers Local Four-Sixteen. And we have been representing well, we work in the oil and gas industry, and we have been following the strictest of codes. But we're in a crosshair right now. We're in a crossroads. I just, we have been following the strictest environmental codes, especially the unions, and we're held to a different labor level. I think a lot of people don't see the things that, or the requirements that are held on us. And I'd like to, I think the policies before you would cause a great deal of damage to a good, safe industry. And a lot of people just don't look at what we do and the levels for the requirements that are held on us. So...
Next speaker.
Caller ending in three, seven, four, three, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Jose Pina, item number thirteen.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Jose Pina with Creed L.A. And as we look to decrease our dependence on oil and gas, it's important to recognize that it won't happen overnight. This is going to be a long process, and currently, this is an industry that supports many thousands of our citizens and residents. Especially now, in these times, it would be irresponsible to harm hard-working Angelenos' livelihood. Legislating from a place of fear will destroy blue collar families who depend on the oil industry to support their families and burden all of us with higher costs, all without actually improving the public health. We urge you to protect these workers. We need to retain the benefit of producing locally. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in two, eight, zero, three, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Paola Flores. I'd like to speak on item thirteen, please.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Paola Flores. I am with the Los Angeles County Business Federation, often known as BISSEN. As you know, we are an alliance of over two hundred business organizations representing over four hundred thousand employers in Los Angeles County. We understand that this committee is reviewing the report on implementing an oil setback in cities. In light of COVID- nineteen, it has become apparent that now is not the time to be considering the setbacks. Businesses and residents are struggling to survive in the city's sole focus should be on providing resources to help them stay afloat and to find solutions that will help boost their economy when this pandemic lasts. As such, we find this completely inappropriate to even consider the potential of placing more people out of work. We also highlighted the need for Los Angeles to rely more on local resources and imposing a new setback would increase our already heavy dependence on foreign oil at a time. We believe any consideration of the setback would further hurt the economy and the communities our economy sustains. We hope you will reconsider this item. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in two, five, one, three, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in two, five, one, three, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in zero, nine, seven, three, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Omar Galindo, item number thirteen.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good afternoon to all. My name is Omar Galindo, and I'm with Clemmers Local Seventy-Eight. I am so proud that I am able to support my family here in Los Angeles by working side by side with coworkers as essential workers in the oil and gas industry. From the beginning of this pandemic, our members have stepped up so that our energy sector remains strong and so they could still support our families. Please reject any recommendations of increased setbacks and other restrictions on oil and gas production that would only be harmful today. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in one, four, zero, three, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
It's me, Mommy. All items, Mommy. General public comment.
What items, Mr. Spindler?
All the items.
So, two minutes. Two minutes on all items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, today is the day we expose the truth, the secret memorandum of the city attorney. Nuri, go to great, great fucking service to the city. You will all learn the cover-up. The cover-up of the Rancho gas leak. November two thousand seventeen, I was driving down Pico Boulevard, and I nearly fainted from the smell. And I called, and I called, and I called. And then Paul Corretts called up a couple of days later and said, "There was no spill. There was no leak." You liar, you! Now you will see the three-year gas leak, toxic cover-up of Rancho Park and why Paul Peppa Pig Corretts should be immediately arrested and charged with being a fat pig. And then we will look at the memorandum. Poisoning, killing children, black people, brown people. For what? So you can drill for oil? We got all the oil you need. Look at CNNbusiness.com, free market. A barrel of oil is forty-one fucking dollars. You can buy it from Saudi Arabia. They got so much fucking oil, they're shutting production down because it's too cheap. And I go to Gil Sadio's favorite gas station on Melrose in New Hampshire. I pay two sixty-three a gallon. While the rest of the Jews in the valley pay two ninety-three.
Move on to your general public comment now.
Yes, my general comment. Now you see who the demons in the council are. The KKK of Los Angeles, Cracorian and Corretts. What a coincidence that their last names have a KKK, and I'm right. The two fucking lying scumbags. Arrest them immediately and imprison them. Take them off this committee. Richard Farron will do the right thing on this. Nuri will do the right thing on this. Care will do the right thing on this. And all of that campaign money will go into the pocket. So Gil Sadio for mayor, Nuri Martinez for interim mayor, Eric Garcetti for prison, and if your cock has been grabbed by the mayor, call two-one-three, four-seven-three, seven-zero-zero-eight and report the sexual harassment that you have suffered, police.
Next speaker.
Hey.
Caller ending in five, seven, seven, one, press star six.
Speaker, can you hold on for just a second? Can you turn down your device? We're getting a lot of feedback from your end.
The screen went back to zero. It just has the big sound.
Hold on for just, Mr. Corretts, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you. Sorry, I thought that was our speakers. Okay, let's go ahead and take the next caller.
Caller ending in five, seven, seven, one, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller ending in five, six, eight, five, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Sammy O'Nieto, and I would like to speak on item thirteen.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Sammy O'Nieto, and I'm calling in today to speak against imposing the setbacks. Harming these jobs right now is bound to be unpopular and very harmful to our economy. Well, it isn't popular with me. I know people who work in these jobs, and they are good jobs for the community members to have, especially in these uncertain times. Please don't impose the setbacks. It won't be good for our economy. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in seven, eight, three, nine, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in seven, eight, three, nine, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in six, six, zero, five, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in six, six, zero, five, press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in eight, eight, four, four, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ginata. I would like to speak on item number thirteen.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
I am the staff attorney at Communities for a Better Environment, and we are part of the Stand L.A. Coalition. We believe that a twenty-five hundred foot buffer zone ordinance establishing a setback between sensitive uses in oil and gas operations is within the powers of the city. Exaggerate cost projections contained in the petroleum administrator's report do not reflect reality. Right now, the pandemic recovery will need a just transition, one that will create an energy economy that benefits frontline communities and workers. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller ending in one, zero, one, eight, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Liz Jones, speaking on item thirteen.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm an attorney with the Center for Biological Diversity, and like others, I want to urge the committee to pass a motion to both release the key findings of the city attorney's report and also to start the process of drafting an ordinance for a twenty-five hundred foot health and safety buffer. In addition to all the terrible health issues linked to pollution from neighborhood drilling, we now know that related air pollution increases the risk of dying from COVID- nineteen. we now know that related air pollution increases the risk of dying from COVID-19. Black, Latino, and low-income Angelenos have been devastated by the pandemic and now more than ever, we need action from this committee and from the council to protect their health and safety. Other jurisdictions like Ventura County and Culver City have recently stepped up and used their broad land use power to regulate oil and gas operations. We hope you will also act quickly to protect constituents and provide for a just transition. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Caller ending in 0963, press star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Good afternoon, my name is Monica Embry and I'd like to speak on item 13.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Dear council members, again, my name is Monica Embry. I'm an associate director with the Sierra Club. And on behalf of our 60,000 members and supporters across Los Angeles County, we are strongly urging you to move forward with advancing a 2,500-foot human health and safety buffer. Earlier this year, I lost my cousin to cancer, a cancer that we know is caused by the pollutants that come from neighborhood oil drilling. Far too many of our community members have lost their lives and given the health impacts increased with our current global pandemic, we implore you to do what is needed and follow the interests of people. This is also something that can take into significant economic and job considerations. With the remediation of oil wells, there's an opportunity for a truly just transition away from fossil fuel production and towards clean energy. Just a few months ago, LA County passed a motion that we hope LA City will join to call on oil workers to transition out of production instead into the plugging and remediation.
Okay, and that concludes public comment for today's meeting. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment. Members, I'd like to move, approve the DWP items 2, 4, 5, and 6 on consent unless anyone has any questions or comments. Mr. Corretts? Mr. Corretts?
Yes, I'll have a short question on item number two.
Item number two, okay, hold on for just a second. So are there any questions on items 4, 5, and 6? Okay, seeing none, those items are approved on consent without objection. Let me move on to two other items related to the sanitation department. Items 7 and 8, if there's no questions or comments, I'd like to move those on consent as well. Seeing none, those two items are approved on consent without objection. Let's go back to item number two, Mr. Corretts. Go ahead. Let me make sure I have the department on our Zoom meeting. Okay, they're in the meeting, so go ahead and ask your question, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. I see that SB 859 stipulates that sellers of electricity are required to purchase a total of 125 megawatts of power from biomass facilities that generate electricity from forest materials removed from specific high fire hazard zones. I just want to clarify for the public and for my own edification that the biomass that will be burned will be only dead trees in tier one and two high fire hazard zones, not from living virgin timber. Is that correct?
This is James Barner, Assistant Director of Clean Grid LA Strategy at LEDWP. The SB 859 requirement is that 80% of the feedstock for the facility come from sustainable forestry management, which includes tier one and tier two. And at least 60% of that feedstock shall be from tier one and tier two high hazard zones. So that's a requirement for the SB 859 to qualify that biomass facility as, under that special designation of SB 859 legislation.
So, to answer my still unanswered question, will we be burning only dead trees and not living virgin timber?
We believe the majority of it would be. And LEDWP does not take any of the energy from that facility. So we do not import any of that energy. We do not use it for qualifying for renewable RPS requirements. It's only to comply with 859, which requires POUs and IOUs to purchase a certain amount of the capacity from those facilities.
So do we have any ability to direct that it all be used from dead trees and not from virgin trees?
Not in the present PPA. But we believe that most of it is from dead and dying trees. Most of their businesses do it, using the trees for building projects, such as plywood and paneling and that sort of thing. This is sort of a byproduct of that whole industry.
So if we don't have the ability to direct that all of it be from dead trees, can we make that request and push for that from the entities that do have that decision-making capability? It sounds like we haven't made that request so far.
We would have to look into it, but I think we could, we could look into that further to try to see if we could, we could make that a requirement or at least, at least get their confirmation that they're doing that.
Yeah, because there's certainly no shortage of dead trees with the huge drought with the wildfires we've had. And there could be circumstances where it would be more convenient for them to use live trees, but for that potential minimal amount of convenience, we would just be killing live trees for no particular reason.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Corretts, I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve this item. Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Okay, members, let's go ahead and move on to items 1 and 3. Mr. Corretts, can you go ahead and read those two items into the record, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item number one is motion Martinez-Rodriguez relative to requesting the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power to report with a plan and timeline for decommissioning the Valley Generating Station, which should evaluate the impacts this facility and other polluters have on the health of nearby residents and describe how it can be decommissioned in a way that does not disrupt the overall power supply or negatively impacts jobs. Item number three is the Board of Water and Power Commissioners and City Administrative Officer Reports, Resolution Number 021061, an ordinance relative to authorizing the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power to use a competitive sealed bid proposal method to establish design bill criteria for a contract not to exceed five years for the Valley Generating Station units 1 through 4 demolition project.
All right, thank you. And members, these two items are related to the Valley Generating Station, which is in my district and actually adjacent to Mr. Corcoran's and Ms. Rodriguez's district as well. And for years, you've heard calls to shut down our coastal power plants, but nothing about power plants that are directly in the most polluted communities. In fact, I've heard that efforts to shut down coastal plants actually creates an increase in operations and emissions at the Valley Generating Station. So I, one, don't think it's fair and I don't think it's right, especially when there's kids who, in these areas, suffer from the highest asthma rates in LA County. We also know that these neighborhoods are some of the neighborhoods that score the highest in the environmental screen. And so when we approach this, people often preach about the Green New Deal and preach about plans on sustainability, but my question is often, to who? If a Green New Deal means more harm to the children from the northeast San Fernando Valley, that would just never work for me. And I've said it before, what we need instead is a Green New Deal in Los Angeles that focuses on the most burning communities first. Because we are either going to address environmental racism or we're just going to continue to do the same thing day after day. So one of our items in the motion is asking DWP to report on the plan to decommission the Valley Generating Station. And if we are truly about environmental justice, then it needs to be an absolute priority. Item number three relates to the initial action by DWP to finally, to finally take down these old towers at the Valley Generating Station that haven't been used in years. These old towers, if you're familiar with the area, you can see them off the 170 freeway, are just a painful reminder to our local residents that we don't get to have beautiful ocean side views or even scenic views of our local mountains. Instead, there's a skyline of nothing but old smoke stacks that remind us of the emissions that we have to breathe and the asthma and other health impacts that we have created as a result of this generating station. So I have the department here with us. I'd like to ask DWP that you give us a brief presentation about where we're at because I would like to move forward in approving these two items. But before I do so, I want you to provide a brief update if you can, please.
Good afternoon, this is, I'm sorry, did somebody else say?
No, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam President, council members. Thank you for the opportunity. The progress we made is significant. In fact, for the whole city of Los Angeles, we increased from 20% of renewable back in 2010, just 10 years ago, to 34% in 2019, so that is significant effort. In addition to that, and Madam President, thank you for sponsoring yesterday's Fit Solar briefing and also workshop with the LABC and thank you for hosting that and helping us to get the word out that our solar, Los Angeles is still number one city of solar for two years in a row. So we're definitely increasing more solar in basin so that we can reduce the amount of gas usage within in basin. And Valley, item number three today, up for your consideration, is the first step. Like you said, it's the initial step for us to essentially, to take down those old units built back in the 1950s and to demolish. So our most significant effort, again, thank you for the council members for your approvals, is to partner with UnRail. And 100% study that some of your member staff has been part of as part of the advisory group and is coming together. We have very solid results that's going to come out fairly soon, hopefully by the first quarter of next year, that we can present. And that it will show a pathway to 2045 to 100% to meet a state mandate. So those are all the steps we're taking. And in addition to the very first step, initial step for Valley, and that the item number three will be that.
All right, thank you very much. There are no other, any questions from our members, any comments? Okay, if not, I would like to, oh, Mr. Corretts, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm curious, a question for staff. If we're using the Apex Generating Station to its fullest capacity and what impact doing so, if we're not, might have on helping decommission the Valley Generating Station?
So Apex Generating Station was originally to replace the co-generating station that we decommissioned back in 2016, was a Mojave Generating Station. So that was the intent of that. So we reduce our carbon footprint GHG emissions significantly from Mojave and because of Apex. Now, we are, we are also looking at renewable potentials where Apex is so we can repurpose that transmission and all that infrastructure that we have from west of the river, over that entire area so that we can definitely import more renewables so we can increase our footprint.
So is there any capacity that we anticipate being excess that could aid in this effort to shut down the Valley Generating Station?
Again, the intent of Apex was to replace Mojave and when Mojave was in service, it was mainly run on a continuous basis. But Apex, because of the additional renewables, for example, the WIM project that was just approved by the council, that project will essentially replace some of the generation potentially during, depending on the part of the year, could be spring, could be winter, that the Apex will be able to be reduced so that we can reduce overall the gas footprint.
So, once again, a direct question with a direct answer. Can this help decommission the Valley Generating Station? Or is it just enough to do the other things that we're hoping it will do?
And I have to, Apex is way out of the basin, so the reliability for the in basin, for the grid reliability, it depends on the situation. So during a certain time of the year, that may happen, that the Apex may take some of the resource load away from Valley. However, depending on the situation, for example, when we had Saddle Ridge Fire, when we had Blue Cup Fire, when we had those fires, wildfire that happens, Valley was very critical. When we had RSJ in the Valley that caught on fire, again, all those generating stations that came to aid the system to kind of support the reliability of the grid, Valley was very critical. However, with everything in place, everything's back to normal, depending on the season of the year, Apex may take some of the load away from Valley.
Okay, so, well, not the answer I was hoping for because it clearly can't be relied upon throughout the year. So it could be helpful, but not the full answer. Thank you for the question.
The grid is very complicated.
Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ting, for your comments about the work that DWP has been doing with the National Renewable Energy Lab. And thank you for your work and all of the men and women at DWP that have taken this task so seriously in the, what has it been now, four years since I initiated this process with some of my colleagues to move Los Angeles to become the first large municipal utility to reach 100% clean energy. And the fact that you tied that endeavor to decommissioning our gas-powered power plant, our gas-fired power plants, I think is a key point because we have to have grid reliability. And doing that with intermittent, with renewables, that many of which are intermittent, creates great complexity in implementation. And it is an engineering challenge like, you know, the space program, say. So I just wanted to reemphasize how important it is to tie these issues together because it's easy to respond to slogans, but it's a lot harder to do the actual work of implementing. And so everybody who's interested in coming out and talking to the council about the need to move to renewable energy, the need to decommission the gas-fired plants and so on, I hope that when your report comes back to the council and it makes a variety of difficult recommendations that we're going to have to choose among in order to get to 100% renewable, that everyone who cares about those issues will equally come to the council and stand in support of those recommendations. If that includes utility-scale renewable generation in the desert, if that includes increased costs to ratepayers, if that includes upgrades to infrastructure in the distribution system, all of those other things that will likely be necessary to do this are going to involve some hard choices for this council. And I hope that people will continue to monitor this and realize that when we have to make those hard choices, this is the reason. The reason that we make those hard choices is exactly so that we can decommission old gas-fired power plants that people do not want in their neighborhoods. And it's not just a general commitment to doing our part in reducing our carbon footprint, although it is that as well. It also has direct impacts on the quality of life and the public health of the people who live in this city. And so I just call upon everybody who cares about this issue. Stay engaged because we're stay engaged, because we're going to have to make hard choices, some of which people are not going to like. But if we want to have this result, that's what we're going to have to do. So I just wanted to thank you for your continuing work on that. And after almost a decade and a half of working on getting to this point in Sacramento and here, I'm delighted to hear that we're going to be getting that report in the first quarter of next year, because I'm very much looking forward to seeing the end result of that work. So thank you very much.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. If there's no other further questions, I'd like to go ahead and approve items one and three without objection. Okay, let's move on to item number nine. Mr. Cor, can you please read that item into the record?
Yes, Madam Chair. Presentation by the Bureau of Sanitation relative to an update on the development of an environmental rating system scorecard for the Recycle LA program.
Okay, thank you. And this item is one that's been a priority to Mr. Corret. So recognizing that this year has created so many challenges for so many of us, it's important that we also, we do our best to position and monitor Recycle programs since it's been, since it's long-term. So sanitation, if you're in our meeting, can you hear us? I'd like to ask them to provide an update on the development of the scorecard.
Well, good afternoon. My name is...
Hold on, Dan. I just want to make sure I have everyone in the meeting before you can, before we, you start. Alex Helu, are you with us? Okay, he's not. Dan, are you doing most of the updating, or is Alex going to join us later?
I will be providing the update.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that? And after you're done, I want to go ahead and kick it off to Mr. Corret, since this is a very important issue for him. He's got a series of questions. So go ahead, Dan.
Okay, well, good afternoon. Again, my name is Dan Myers. I'm the Division Manager for the Solid Resources Commercial Franchise Division within LA SAN. And I'm here to provide the update on Recycle and the development of an environmental rating system, also known as the Environmental Scorecard. As you know, Recycle is designed to help meet many of the city's environmental goals and provide customers the ability to comply with many of the state's requirements, including AB 341, AB 1826, and the newly adopted Organics Recycling Regulations SB 1383. The seven R Recycle Service Providers, or RSPs, are underway to help the city reach its goals. In total, the RSPs are collecting 1 million, over 1 million cubic yards of blue bin recycling every month, or 15,000 tons of recyclables per month. The RSPs have converted their fleet of collection vehicles to clean-fuel, low-emission vehicles, 542 in total. In April 2019, LA SAN and the RSPs implemented their Removing Barriers to Recycling Program that incentivized customers to recycle by removing blue bin access and distance charges. Customers that previously had paid extra service charges on their blue bins benefited from a retroactive credit, totaling over $11 million for the period of February 2018 to March 2018. These customers continue to benefit by not paying extra service charges on their blue bins. A two-year optimization period was also created wherein the RSPs must conduct a robust commercial and multifamily recycling and outreach education program. During this period, the RSPs have collectively reported that they've conducted over 150,000 waste assessments and over 3,000 contamination visits. On October 30th, 2019, the Board of Public Works approved the Recycle Facility Certification Program. This facility certification program, one of the cornerstones of Recycle, helped to ensure that facilities that accept solid resources collected through the program are aligned with and meet the city's goals. To date, there are 41 solid resources facilities located within and outside the city boundaries that have been certified. Like many businesses in the city and in the nation, the RSPs have been impacted by the COVID-19 crisis. Early in the COVID crisis, the RSPs worked to temporarily suspend service. It impacted customers. In some cases where the RSPs could make determinations that a business had closed, they suspended the service on behalf of their customers. Thousands of customers have suspended service due to the COVID crisis. To date, over, or nearly 3,300 businesses have resumed service from suspension, while 1,700 remain on suspension. And unfortunately, 270 customers have canceled their service altogether. In March, due to the COVID crisis, the RSPs did place a hold on in-person training. In August, the RSPs began to resume some in-person training with the necessary personal protection and social distancing. In late March, there were a number of facilities that closed down due to the concerns of the potential spread of COVID-19. This impacted some of our RSPs, and as a result, some recyclables were disposed of. However, by June 1st, all facilities had made the necessary adjustments to reopen. This brings us to the Environmental Scorecard. Council directed LA SAN, among other requirements, to create an environmental rating system to assess the performance of the RSPs in key environmental areas, including organics diversion. The existing Recycle program contemplates a midterm contract evaluation that will allow city council to make informed decisions based upon RSP's performance, including deciding whether to renew an RSP's Recycle contract. However, the creation of an environmental scorecard provides the ability to analyze performance leading up to the midterm check-in and beyond. It's important to note that the scorecard that we'll be talking about is not intended to reflect contractual requirements, but whether a gauge of each RSP's status in assisting the city in meeting its environmental goals. For this discussion, the scorecard will focus on three key areas as markers towards diversion: program diversion, landfill reduction, and organic subscription. I'll start with the Contract Diversion Target Rating System. LA SAN has developed a dynamic rating system to determine whether the RSPs are on the right trajectory to meet their long-term contractual diversion goals. The rating system will compare an RSP's actual annual tonnage diverted for each diversion program, primarily the blue bin and green bin collection, against their annual contractual diversion targets. This rating system will be a tool to determine if an RSP's diversion programs are on track and if the RSPs are instituting proactive efforts to reach the city's diversion goals. Each of the RSP contracts contain expected annual diversions for blue bin recyclables and green bin organics. These annual diversion projections were provided by the RSPs in their proposals. The rating system will compare actual diversion and disposal amounts per year to the targeted disposal reduction for both commingled recyclables and organics as stated in the contract. Points will be assigned for each 10% increment achieved towards an RSP's diversion goal. Two points for every 10% increment where the target was exceeded. Conversely, one negative point for every 10% increment not achieved. This will allow for clear depiction of whether an RSP is meeting or exceeding their goals. When measured against the 2019 projected diversion, none of the RSPs have met their diversion goals for either blue bin recyclables or green bin organics. Well, next, I'll next look at landfill reduction evaluation. It's a slightly different way of looking at diversion. The RSPs are required to reduce their tonnage of solid waste disposed in accordance with the disposal targets listed in each of the Recycle contracts. Each RSP is responsible for reducing their landfill disposal by 25% in 2025. In addition to the 2025 goal, there are two measurement periods, one in 2022 and one in 2024, where if the RSP does not meet certain landfill reductions, LA SAN may assess liquidated damages. Each Recycle contract contains annual, contains annual landfill reduction targets. Leading up to their 2025 contractual goal, the RSPs will be measured annually against their target landfill reduction. When measured against the 2019 projected reductions, none of the RSPs currently have met their goals for landfill reduction. Finally, we'll look at organic subscriptions. In accordance with AB 1826, any business that generates more than four cubic yards of solid waste per week must arrange for organics collection. Source-separated organics is not part of a customer's basic level of service. Each customer must agree to subscribe to a source-separated organics program. The RSPs are responsible for working with each customer to arrange for organics collections as appropriate. LA SAN will track each RSP's success in working with customers to subscribe to source-separated organics collection and compare it to the number of businesses that generate more than four cubic yards of waste per week. This will provide a yardstick of an RSP's success in working with customers to subscribe to organics collection. Note, this does not reflect the success of the RSPs, the success they have gained in establishing food rescue to feed those with food insecurities. So this is, provides a brief overview of the development of the RSP Environmental Scorecard. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Corret, why don't we go ahead and start off with you?
Okay, thank you, Madam President, for scheduling this and my other items today. First, I'd like to give a little background. When Councilmember Corcoran and I introduced this, amendments to the Recycle Service Contract had delayed the crucial development and implementation of the organics collection program, which I believed and continue to believe is essential to our reducing large amounts of greenhouse gas emissions, not just in time to meet our goals, but in time to meet the loudly ticking climate clock whose alarm bell keeps going off around the world with each extreme storm, drought, and record-breaking wildfire. Since we weren't going to have an active organics program right away, we wanted to get a scorecard in place that we could better evaluate which of the service providers were not only meeting the eventual requirements, but the spirit of the program. When then COVID hit and made things even tougher, and I do want to acknowledge the hard work of both LA Sanitation and our Recycle Service Providers during unprecedented upheaval across so many sectors, and especially this one. Unfortunately, the climate crisis has not taken a break for COVID, so we really need not to do that either. But the earlier they get started, the sooner we reduce methane and get significant amounts of greenhouse gases out of the atmosphere, and the sooner we can be a great example to the rest of the country which needs to follow suit. Just two weeks ago, on November 3rd, Cal Recycle received approval for its SB 1383 Short-lived Climate Pollutants Regulations, which will go into effect on January 1st, 2022. The regulatory framework has now been finalized, and so what is measured by our environmental scorecard is exactly what is addressed by SB 1383. This scorecard will help the city council make decisions about whose contract to renew, a decision which is approaching more quickly than one might realize. So I have a few questions. First, how is sanitation to set up to regulate compliance with organic objectives? And how will the scorecard assist? And how will they use that information at the five-year checkpoint and at the 10-year contract renewal checkpoint?
So the scorecard specifically set up to help us monitor compliance and movement towards meeting the city's goals and SB 1383. What's important is SB 1383 requires businesses to subscribe to organics programs. And we know that it's that subscription, it's the organic component that is going to get us to our ultimate, you know, environmental goal of removing a million tons from the landfill. So we are set up right now, we're able to monitor on, essentially on ongoing basis, every customer's service levels. So we know the minute a customer has signed up for organic service, we will know that, we're able to monitor it, we're able to see that level of participation. On a monthly basis, we're provided with tonnage data. So it's broken down by the different commodities. So it's broken down by solid waste, it's broken down by recycling, it's broken down by organics. So we absolutely have the tools to be able to monitor how each RSP is moving towards meeting those goals. And we also work with them very closely on their outreach and education programs, which we also want to try to get the same message out on the importance of recycling organics.
Mr. Corret, any other questions?
Yes, I was muted. We issued notices to comply and notices of violations to allow the service providers to correct them. Will these notices be tracked in the scorecard as well?
Certainly. I mean, in discussion today, I just touched on the pieces more related to the organics piece. But we're definitely, we're looking at a scorecard that's much more encompassing and would include that type of information for each RSP.
Terrific. And when do financial damage assessments come in?
So if you're specifically referring to liquidated damages for diversion, so there's two measurement periods. The first one is 2022. So we would, in 2023, once we have all the data for 2022, we would evaluate whether or not they have met their contractual goals. And we would assess it then. Next period would be 2024. So once 2024 is completed, we would measure that in 2025.
Okay, and a question on the business side of the equation. I believe under SB 1383, businesses only have to initiate mandated behavior by 2024. Is that correct?
So SB 1383 is very, very thick in all its requirements. Enforcement of the requirements begin in 2024. And 2022, it really begins when businesses, residential programs need to have subscription to organics program.
So if a customer is visited by a service provider and is asked to do recycling of organics or organics collection, do we have any mechanism for enforcement that we've provided them?
No, the Recycle contracts do not currently have an LA SAN enforcement mechanism associated with that. It is the responsibility of the RSPs to work with each customer to get that subscription in order for them to meet their goals.
Well, I thank you. I think we need to make that easier for the providers to enforce this and to actually make this program work as early as possible as it avoids massive amounts of methane. So I'd like to direct sanitation to report back in 30 days, or at least make a motion to do so, on what an ordinance requiring mandatory participation of businesses by January 1st, 2022 might include, and what... and what impacts it would have on those businesses, so that we can provide our service providers with the enforcement they need to help us help them meet their goals and meet our goals.
I'll second that.
So I just was gonna ask, so that is in a form of a motion, so Mr. Kukorian to second, Mr. City Clerk? Anything else, Mr. Kretz? There's other members on the queue?
No, that's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Myers, for being on top of this and for your report. First question, you mentioned the impacts on the RSPs relating to COVID. But obviously, there's been a dramatic impact on the entire business community of Los Angeles because of COVID as well. So are you aware whether any of the RSPs adjusted rates to the businesses that were paying them monthly when many of those businesses were providing far less into the waste stream or were closed altogether?
So I'm, I'm not aware of specific instances where, where the rates were modified. What, what the RSPs tried to do, and, and we saw thousands of cases, is, is work very closely with the businesses to, to quickly modify their service to match their revised needs. Businesses operating at a far, far less capacity than they were before. So a number of businesses have modified service, which is also one of the reasons that what we did is, is we actually gave them the authority to suspend somebody's service. If they went out there and, and obviously a shuttered business, we wanted that, that, that suspension to happen very quickly so that there, there were no additional charges incurred that would have to be worked out at a later point.
Okay, great, thank you. So thank you for your report. I want to put a little bit finer point on the, the overview that you gave about the RSP's disastrous failure to meet the objectives that this policy was designed to achieve. There are seven RSPs over, they had two measurable objectives for recycling and for organics, for recycling diversion and for organics. Over the course of two years, that makes 28 contractual objectives that needed to be met. And they failed on 27 of the 28. Only one RSP met one of its objectives in one year out of two years. And in most cases, they were nowhere close to achieving their objective. I mean, not even in the neighborhood. So I can't stress in strong enough terms how not disappointed, but outraged I am that these RSPs have completely failed to deliver the entire objective of this misguided policy. And, and it just, I think, absolutely makes crystal clear why it was a grave mistake to give exclusive franchises in the first place, because competition would have addressed this. But monopoly impacts have allowed them to essentially blow off their obligations. And, and I just, I just can't say in strong enough terms how, how clear that is to me now. And then when it comes to the organics obligations now, we're looking forward to requirements that need to be met under AB 1826. In this city, there are 47,692 businesses that are subject to AB 1826. Forty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. And so far, 900 of them have subscribed to green bins with the RSPs. 900 out of 47,692. So that's almost a 2% success rate. As we're looking forward to liquidated damages, and I want every one of those RSPs to hear loud and clear that I intend to seek every penny of liquidated damages the first second that they're available to us. But my bigger concern is, this city faces liability and exposure if we don't make our diversion rates, do we not? And I'd like you to talk a little bit about that. What, what is, what is the consequence that the city of Los Angeles will face if it doesn't meet the diversion goals that this policy was intended to deliver as a result of our RSP's failure to do what we expect them to do? What exposure does the city face?
So the, the city ultimately does, is essentially on the hook for, for compliance with the regulations. The, the, the regulations from an enforcement component rely more programmatically. So it's, it's, the, the state has a, a 75% organics diversion. For the municipalities, what we have to do, we have to show is that we've implemented the programs necessary to meet that, that we have the enforcement mechanisms in place to meet that. So, so essentially, a failure for a business to, to have and subscribe to a, an organics program. And this city, if they would, if they had an inability to enforce against that business, because it's a business facing requirement, then we would be on the hook.
But, I'm sorry, but just so I'm clear, thank you for that clarification about AB 1826. But I mean, aside from the organics, we, we also have recyclable diversion requirements that state law imposes on all municipalities to divert a percentage of our waste stream from the landfills by certain dates, and there are ramifications for those municipalities, municipalities failing to meet those goals. Is that, is that right?
There, there are. You know, right now, the, the, really the high-level bars that, that we're working towards are the city's established zero-waste goals. So the, the city as, as, as a whole is, is in, is in, I don't want to say a good position, but i- is already achieved a very, very large diversion rate citywide.
No question. We, we are, we are setting the example for the rest of the country in many ways, but it's mostly because of you guys. It's mostly because of residential pickup by the Bureau of Sanitation. It's not because of our RSPs and our Recicla program. So my, my question is, if we don't meet our overall diversion goals imposed by the state, are there financial consequences to the city? And if there are, are the liquidated damages that we can potentially get against the RSPs enough to be able to meet those liabilities?
So, so the, the short answer is, is yes. If, if, if we can't show that, that, that we are meeting our goal of diverting the 75% of organics citywide, then, then the city is, is, is liable for damages. I, I cannot tell you at this time, Mr. Kukorian, if, if the liquidated damages, how that relates to a certain, a, a certain number of, of fines, because the fines could be levied, I think, on a per-day basis. So that's not, not likely.
It's important for us to know that, because it's important for us to know whether or not it makes sense for the city to continue this relationship with these RSPs at all. And it's important for us to know that sooner rather than later, because I assume that, as we did when we enacted this policy, we have a five-year notice requirement to give them before we discontinue the program. Is that right under state law?
Uh, no, that's not, that's, that's not correct. So the five-year notice is applicable when you're moving from an, an open system to a franchise system. So, and it's specifically there to give notice to, to people that they may not have the rights anymore to operate. It, it doesn't, doesn't necessarily work, you know, when, when you're talking about just the, your exclusive franchise contracts.
Okay, so if we discontinue an existing franchise agreement, that does not trigger the Public Resources Code section that requires the five-year notice?
No, it does not, it does not go, go the other direction.
Okay, okay, great. Final question, because I don't want to monopolize the time, but to what degree, as we've been measuring the achievement of diversion goals by the providers, to what degree has, how have we figured in the inability to recycle most plastics, which are probably the majority by volume of, of the recyclables that they're picking up? Now that China has shut their doors and most recyclable, supposedly recyclable plastic is heading for the landfill or the furnace anyway, how do we count that towards the RSPs meeting their goals or not?
Well, great question. You know, right now, I mean, the RSPs in 2019 collected 180,000 tons of recyclables. So that's a significant amount of recyclables that weren't being recycled before. But as to, as to our program and the way the program was set up is that we certify every single facility that an RSP uses. And, and we monitor it for a, a, a number of items, safety, you know, to ensure each facility is running in the way that it should. But the other thing that we do, which is very important, is we actually look at, at the facility's diversion rate, okay? Which means that we actually drill down into, we, we, we take, take samples of the, the, the stream as it's coming in, we take samples of every bit of material that's coming off, and we calculate how much material by, by material type is actually being recovered. And, and we actually then look at the service provider's waste stream. So if they've done a really good job with outreach and education, and the material's very clean, they're going to wind up with a higher capture rate, because there's better material going in. So, so we have the ability to, to see in a very finite level what material's actually being recycled and what isn't. So we'll really answer those questions.
You monitor the downstream recipient too. So they send out their bales of plastic to Acme Plastic Recycling Company. You also determine that Acme Plastic Recycling Company is in fact recycling that and not burning it or, you know, landfilling it.
Well, it is. We do, we, we do look, so right now, we're looking at what's going out. And quite frankly, mostly what happens at, at, at material recovery facilities is they're not pulling out material that doesn't have a market. That makes its way back into the stream that goes to the landfill. So they're, they're typically not bailing bales of material that have no market. It is far more economical for them to just not pull that material out of the waste stream and have it go directly to, to the landfill. So, but this, these aren't good circumstances, these aren't good scenarios, but that's what we'll, that's what we'll be able to see in the process, is truly what they're pulling out. And, and, and really, most facilities do not pull out material, bill material, and ship out material that is just going to wind up in a landfill.
Well, it, it, the, the reason that they would do that is because if the renewal of their very lucrative contract depends on the percentage that they pull out as recyclable material, and they're given credit for that material, whether it's going to a landfill ultimately or not, they have a very strong economic incentive to bail plastic that's not recyclable and, and ship it out under the guise of taking it out of the waste stream. So that's my concern. I, I won't spend more time on it now, but that is exactly my concern, that, that I don't want them to give, get credit for, you know, a, a particular diversion percentage if the material, the very material that they're diverting is going through third parties back into a landfill someplace.
So, but, but again, I would, I would highlight the, the, the beauty of this program, the beauty of the, the beauty of this facility certification program, is, is our ability to do just that, okay? Captain Kukorian, it's, it's not that we're saying we're not going to look at it, but we now have the ability to, right? And, and, and having that ability is, is, I mean, this is new. A- as a matter of fact, when, when the SB 1383 was being developed and there are requirements of calculating diversion at facilities, they looked to us, okay? They, they, they went to our contractors that helped set this up and said, how does this work? And they mirrored their program after us, because it really is, it, it really is set, it is setting the high, high bar standards for tracking material and ensuring it actually gets diverted.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kretz, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, just a brief follow-up on, on, on plastics. I had the same concern years ago, and particularly with China, who's no longer our primary customer, that we would be sending it over to them, they would just be burning it. So that, that's probably the most difficult to monitor, and that's sort of out of our, our area of difficulty. But one thing I asked years ago, which I don't know has been even looked at, which is, is there a way for us to create our own plastics recycling program or plastic, plastic recycling plants either here in LA City or elsewhere in LA County? So that we actually can count on the ability to recycle plastics and use it for our own purposes, sell it to other city governments, other places, but make sure it actually gets recycled and reused?
So, I mean, I, I can tell you that, that, that LA SAN is always looking for opportunities for, for recycling. We did so, we, we did so in our, our Lopez composting facility. We, we, when, when we bought Clarks, we're, we're, we're looking at including organics diversion. We're continually looking at, at the possibilities of, of bringing more of that under our, our own shop. So we are looking at that. I can't tell you of any definitive plans to, to purchase or build a facility at this time, but I know it is something that we are continually evaluating and looking at options. So those, those options are definitely there.
Yeah, I just encourage you to look harder. I think having us have control over the full cycle of recycling obviously gives us a lot more ability to actually make sure we are recycling this, possibly a look at, at a recycled paper plant. If we, if we have that ability, it's, it's clear we have much more of a handle and a guarantee that we can recycle these materials.
If, if I may just quickly respond, Madam Chair. Mr. Kretz, we have a, we have a business grant program that's underway. I introduced a motion to do this to encourage local businesses to take advantage of this opportunity and create new aftermarket opportunities for waste plastic. And also within the city, we have we have piloted or are piloting um the use of waste plastic in paving materials as well as a bonding substitute for patrolling. So um, uh, there's a few options that are already underway.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then um, I would like to hold this item in committee and ask that sanitation come back to this committee with an update on the numbers to share with us for twenty, for year twenty twenty. Um, and there's been a second to your motion, Mr. Cor- Corretts, okay? So we'll go ahead and do that. All right, thank you. Let's move on to um items um related to oil, which are items ten through thirteen. So Mr. Um, City Clerk, well, before you do that, um, these two items as well as uh, so we're going to go ahead and listen to the two items and then as well as a report from the Board of Public Works that we will act on today. And we're also going to hear from the city attorney and staff on their legal review of the petroleum administrators' report. And as I mentioned earlier, um, we will carry out a discussion on December first in committee to deliberate on the actions that we will recommend to council. So colleagues, for today's presentation, some information came in in a confidential report, and I think this is really important, but because of the Brown Act, um, it does not provide us an opportunity to go into a closed session in this committee meeting. So city attorney, we're going to need you to clarify um that if necessary, um, why we don't um... But before I do that, I just want to make sure that the committee members understand um our legal parameters, and if we need to hear from the city attorney to explain what that is, we should do so at the beginning, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. Um, so we've got uh city attorneys on, on our meeting, which is Jennifer Topkin and um David Michelson, and we also have Erica Blyther from the Office of the Petroleum and Nat- uh Natural Gas here with us, should any of you have any questions. So before we start our, our presentation, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to clarify what our legal parameters are in, in listening to the report?
Um, yeah, I'd be pleased to do so. This is David Michelson with the City Attorney's Office. Good afternoon, council members. Um, with me, as the council president has indicated, is Jennifer Topkin, um, in our land use division. Also with me is Terry Coffin-Massius, who heads our land use division, and many of you know, of course, Terry quite well. Um, as the council president pointed out, our office provided actually two confidential reports uh to the city council and other city policymakers uh back in July and in August. Um, the July report in particular was quite detailed, and the, the follow-up in August provided some additional information. Um, the information's confidential because it provides a large degree of um legal analysis associated with the many issues that swirl around this particular topic. Um, and uh, my colleague Jennifer Topkin's going to go into some detail here in a minute uh, in, in a fashion that does not erode that attorney-client confidentiality. We are not in a position to go into closed session, as often we do with you when there's confidential matters, um, because here we have no active litigation, there's no lawsuit currently pending, either brought against the city or brought by the city. Uh, there's no, uh, known um, uh, express threat of litigation against the city. So under the Brown Act, um, there is not the ability to go into a closed session, even if it was agendized uh on the agenda for the committee today. So we're going to do the best we can um at a somewhat high level to sort of walk you through from our office's perspective where we think things stand, and then try to answer your questions, and I'm going to turn that over to Jennifer now, so thank you all.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and hear from the city attorney on their presentations, and members, uh, if you do have any questions of staff today on either one of the motions or on our legal review, hopefully this would help us prepare for our next meeting for further discussion and action. So why don't we go ahead and start with um, with the city attorney?
Hi, uh, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam President and council members. Jennifer Topkin from the Office of City Attorney, Division of Land Use. Uh, as you will recall, on July twenty-nine, twenty nineteen, the Office of Petroleum and Natural Gas Administration and Safety uh issued a very detailed report entitled feasibility of amending current city land use codes in connection with health impacts and oil and gas wells and drill sites. That comprehensive report um concluded with eleven recommendations for city council to consider. The eleven recommendations break down into three general categories. Number one, the adoption of a new zoning ordinance establishing a setback between new and existing drilling uses and sensitive land uses such as schools, hospitals, and homes. The negotiation of one or more MOUs with the county for enhanced local oversight and improved health coordination, uh, and potential transfer of certain uh health functions and additional oversight to the Los Angeles Fire Department. And number three, the establishment of oil and gas restricted funds, possibly through a new barrel tax for strengthening current oversight. On December ten last year, city council passed a motion asking the Office of the City Attorney to provide a legal opinion on these recommendations. Uh, this summer, uh, as Mr. Michelson just uh explained, our office provided two confidential reports addressing the legal issues associated with these three gen- Uh, these reports have been very- ... Our legal analysis is confidential, and we are not in a position to discuss the details of our reports here today. At a very high level, uh, and in reverse order, uh, I can lay out what our office generally concluded. Uh, number one, the city may establish a new tax on oil and gas production in the city. Number two, there is no legal impediment to the city exploring, carving out of or-
Um, I think we're having some technical issues with Ms. Topkin. Can we, is it on her end or ours? It's on her end, it's her internet connection. I think we've lost her. Mr. Michelson, do you have a way to reach her?
Um, you know, Terry might. Terry, can you reach her? And if we're not able, if she is unable to get a, a better internet connection, Terry, you and I'll step in, but I'd like to, uh, if all possible, quickly get Jennifer back.
She's back, hold on, let me see.
Yeah, I am back.
Sorry, it seems to be, I think it's her internet connection.
A request for the drafting of an ordinance will require the planning department to retain experts to assist in the preparation-
Hey, Jennifer, I'm going to cut you off, it's David. I need you to back up, because a lot of what you said uh was not, was garbled, so just back it up if you would, start, please.
That was the important stuff, okay?
Yeah.
Um, let's start with, I'll, I'll go through all three of those. Uh, at a high level, our office concluded, the city may legally place before the voters a ballot measure to establish a new tax on oil and gas production in the city. Uh, number two, there is no legal impediment to the city exploring, carving out of the county health purview, oil and gas oversight responsibility within the city, and placing it with the fire department. And number three, there is a legal path forward for the city to adopt a carefully crafted zoning ordinance establishing a setback from existing or new oil and gas wells and related facilities with an amortization period supported by expert study. A request for the drafting of an ordinance will require the city planning department to retain experts to assist in the preparation of amortization studies, along with experts to assist in the crafting of the actual ordinance. An environmental review under SEQA would also have to be performed in connection with any ordinance that is prepared. Any zoning ordinance enacted by the city will likely result in litigation, but our office will defend in court a carefully crafted setback ordinance backed up by a strong administrative record, which includes expert amortization studies and proper environmental review. And if there's any questions, uh, we will do our best to answer them uh in this open session.
Okay, anything else you want to add, Mr. Michelson?
You know, um, just a little bit, and thank you, Jennifer, that was a good, I think, explanation at, at a sort of a high level in terms of um, of a legal perspective, uh, what the city might be looking at. You know, it's interesting, as best we can tell, there is no existing city or state law that imposes a setback requirement for oil and gas production uses. Um, it does not mean it's not feasible to do that and put in a setback, it's just that under current state and city law, there really are not. Um, as Jennifer pointed out, the petroleum administrator uh in his report um a while back, he recommended that the city council embark upon a study to look at a six-hundred-foot setback for existing oil and gas uh uses, and then a fifteen-hundred-foot setback uh for future oil and gas uh production uses. Um, and as Jennifer pointed out, if, from a policy perspective, ultimately, the city council wants to regulate in this fashion, regardless of what the distances end up being for those setbacks, uh, litigation is quite likely, it'll be costly, and it will be protracted. Um, but if the city is careful in how it crafts these setbacks and works with um uh an outside expert, uh, just like, just like Culver City recently did, that will give us the best chance of successfully defending the litigation that's likely to come. Um, so there is a legal path forward, as, as my colleague Jennifer's pointed out, uh, for the city to pursue these setbacks. Um, it just requires, I think, uh, a very careful uh planning and implementation um to get it done.
All right, thank you. So, uh, colleagues, I also mentioned that Erica Blyther, um, from the Office of Petroleum and Natural Gas is here with us, uh, in case anyone has any questions of her as well. Uh, Mr. Corian?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and uh, thank you, Mr. Michelson, Ms. Topkin. Um, I have lots of detailed questions, none of which are appropriate for me to ask in a non-attorney-client privileged setting. Um, so uh, I will, I'm going to forego those questions until the time that I can follow up uh confidentially, uh, because this is a really important policy that we need to make sure we have right. And as eager as, as all of us are to try to, to do some- something to restrict oil production around sensitive areas in Los Angeles, um, I, I think it's important that we all remember what Mr. Michael- Michelson just said about the very high likelihood that whatever we do in this area, there will be litigation against the city. And as the budget finance chair, I do not want to be the one that has to approve a settlement with oil companies where we take general fund money that would otherwise be spent on services in frontline communities in the city of Los Angeles, and instead give it to oil companies because we did something that was uh not permissible under the law or that required um some kind of uh, uh, consequence that, that will result in that. So a- as eager as we are to move forward on this, I, I think it's really important that we be mindful, the last thing we want to do is subsidize oil companies with public money because of our eagerness that led us to do something that wasn't uh the best legal option for us to pursue. So uh, having said that, I, I will leave my, the remainder of my questions for discussion with the city attorney.
Mr. Corretts?
Well, thank you, Madam President. Um, well, having, having made that statement, Mr. Corian, I think I find myself in a similar position. I have a long list of questions I want to ask and proposals. Um, I'm just not sure I should even begin that process rather than uh asking in closed session whether we jeopardize ourselves legally and how best to do it without doing so. Um, my questions were all in, in the context of item thirteen, uh, but I, I, I have that same concern, so uh, at least for now, if uh, if the rest of the council doesn't move in that direction and we don't ask a bunch of legal questions, uh, I, I will leave this alone for now.
And this is Dave Michelson, let me just add very quickly that um, our office is absolutely prepared to meet with any of you and your staff um i- in a confidential uh, uh, setting to preserve the attorney-client uh, uh, privilege and the work product privilege, um, try to answer your, your legal questions as best we can, so then you'll be in a, in a, in a good position to uh fashion whatever policy directive you may want to do, because there are um significant legal issues, uh, and Councilmember Corian is absolutely correct, uh, if the city does not do this thoughtfully and carefully, um, the, the legal pitfalls and the potential financial consequences can be substantial.
And I suspect that uh, Mr. Corian and I are, are looking at a similar agenda of things we would like to do. Um, but uh, uh, in the interest of our, our ability to defend those actions legally, um, I will hold off and hopefully, uh, we can meet with you individually and uh have a closed session meeting, um, and make sure we're on, on the right legal page as we, as we move forward.
Okay, members, any other comments or questions, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm going to ask a question that I do not think requires attorney uh client privilege, and that is, of other major cities that have enacted a uh much more restricted setback, um, do you have a sense of legal challenges they may have faced? And the route that some of those legal challenges have taken?
Jennifer, you want to take a, take a shot at that, Jennifer?
Sure, Jennifer Topkin, City Attorney's Office. Um, I do, and I'm happy to uh discuss those in a confidential setting. Um, I, I, I do have, I do have a handle on what other cities have done and what other challenges, or what other cities have faced challenge-wise um in litigation on, on this similar issue, yes.
Okay, so that is privileged information. Uh, not an attorney here, but uh, but thank you, that, yeah, that, I think that's the, that's the big question is, is, or one of the many big questions is what type of legal jeopardy mi- might we be in or not, so, all right.
I, I, I will, this is Dave, this is Dave Michelson again, without going into particular detail, I, I will note that a nearby sister city, Culver City, um, has gone down a version of this path over the last couple of years, looking to eliminate oil and gas production uses in the city of Culver's portion of the Inglewood Oil Field, a little more than seventy acres, I think a little more than forty wells. Um, Culver City uh has worked with an outside consultant who's got expertise in this issue and brought forth a study um that discussed uh what the remaining, um, not just the remaining values, but, but uh, what it would take for the current operator to uh, uh, realize its economic uh, uh, value and it, and its investment in those uh oil wells. Um, that was all studied, it was presented to the Culver City Council, and the Culver City Council, I believe, is, is getting closer to considering what next step it wants to take. But litigation, no doubt, um, I don't, uh, I hope Culver City gets to avoid litigation, but presumably, when Culver City acts, they'll be probably looking at litigation, and that's why they're, I think, being very cautious is, is just the path that they follow.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have no other questions or comments? So let's do this, um, let's go ahead and um proceed with the following actions. Um, for items ten and eleven, let's go ahead and adopt those motions. On item number twelve, let's adopt the Board of Public Works recommendations. And for item thirteen, let's ask the city clerk to include that on our December first meeting agenda, along with the petroleum administrator report in council, um, in council file seventeen dash zero four four seven. Mr. Corretts? Mr. Corretts?
You're muted, Paul.
Mr. Corretts, you're muted, sir.
I thought we were focused on just the item at hand, which has legal ramifications that we've decided not to discuss. I certainly would have comments on item 11 and questions, and...
Sir, when we began, I took all items together. What I had mentioned is that we had taken items 10 through 13, which is what's before us.
Well, I focused on those issues, I have...
I understand. If you have questions on the other two items, please go right ahead.
Okay. First, for our active petroleum administrator, given that the item we're talking about concerns an operator funding its own inspections, which makes this question relevant, could you please tell me where the citywide inspections motion is in our process and when we could reasonably expect annual inspections to be in place and operating? I join my CD5 constituents in having various concerns about how long this process has been taking.
Good afternoon, honorable committee members. I'm Erica Blyther from the Office of Petroleum and Natural Gas. Unfortunately, I can't speak to that, as that would be a Brown Act violation, that item is not agendized today.
Seriously? So that couldn't come up as part of this item?
That's correct.
All right. So anything not relating to this site only? So I can't ask you whether we have other Mercaptain operations in the city, such as the one that kind of blew up in the Rancho Park area?
That I can answer. So on page 19 of my, actually, sorry, that is on page... Yes, on page 19 of the report, there's a listing of the five odorant sites that are in the city of Los Angeles. There's one at Mission Vesco, O'Melanie Park, one at Rancho Park, one at the Broadway Drill Site, one at Murphy, and one at Warren E&amp;P Site.
And have we done any kind of risk assessment to see what danger we are in of having a similar event to that that occurred at Rancho Park? And whether those operations could fail during a significant earthquake or other natural challenges?
We have not done an earthquake risk assessment, but we know that SoCal Gas has actually gone through and replaced equipment, and so what their solution has been was to have a new valve design, designed to prevent this type of spill from occurring again. So that has been their safety fix to this particular equipment.
What other dangers there are in having a Mercaptain spill? Because we were fortunate, ours was pretty minor, and yet it could be smelled for a good four miles in every direction and had at least some health impacts on the folks most nearby. So if we could have some sort of a review and report back on that, that would be great. I'd also like to move the petroleum administrators' recommendations on item 11 as well as item 12.
Anything else, Mr. Corretts?
That's it. I don't know if I need a second on moving the petroleum administrators' recommendations on item 11 and 12, but if I do, I'd like to ask for...
Part of my initial, when I was reading the instructions, that was part of my recommendations.
Right, perfect. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Let me just repeat that one more time for our city clerk. So for items 10 and 11, let's go ahead and adopt those motions. On item number 12, let's adopt the Board of Public Works recommendations. And on item 13, let's go ahead and ask the city clerk to include that on the December 1 meeting agenda, along with the petroleum administrator report, council file 17-0447. Okay? So without objection, that will be the order. And members, that concludes our agenda items for today's committee. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.